Of the Gardner Planning Board, first item of business is I'll read the public meeting notice into the record. In accordance with Article 10 of the City of Gardner's zoning code, Chapter 675-1010, Site Plan Review Notice is hereby given that the Gardner Planning Board will conduct our public review meeting on Tuesday, August 9th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Hubbard Conference Room, Room 203, City Hall Annex, 115 Pleasant Street, Gardner, to consider the definitive plan application submitted by Mass Ave Rentals LLC, 69 Massachusetts Avenue, Lunenburg. The definitive plan depicts proposed rehabilitation of the property located at 42 to 50 and 52 Parker Street, Gardner. The rehabilitation will consist of demolishing the interior of the existing building and to reconstruct the interior to accommodate 29 residential apartments consisting of 15 one-bedroom, one-bath apartments and 14 two-bedroom, one-bathroom apartments. In addition, a portion of 32 Parker Street, known as Parcel A, will also be included as part of the total project to be used for 43 parking spaces. The application and site plan are available for viewing on the City of Gardner Planning Board website. The plans are also available for viewing in the Department of Community Development and Planning in Room 201 of the City Hall Annex. All persons interested in this matter or who desire to offer testimony are invited to participate.
All right, any preliminaries before we invite our presenters to the floor?
Sure, Chairman, I'd just leave with a quick guy intro for the project. The City Redevelopment Authority, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and Mass Ave Rentals have been working on this project for two to three years now. The Redevelopment Authority bought the property a few years ago and put it out for an RFP. We had no responses. We then approached Mr. Lord and then Mass Ave Rentals to see if he was interested. At the time, he did take a look at it. It was very, very tight financially to take on a project like this without having any grant money or free money from the state because it's a market rate development as opposed to an affordable development. So it took us a couple of years to convince the state to develop a program for market rate housing in our downtowns. Mr. Lorden applied through the program with the city assistance and received a substantial grant of $90,000 to bring some equity into the project to make it work. Recently, Mass Ave Rentals made it official. They purchased the property from the Redevelopment Authority. Last month, actually, it has been working diligently on, well, before that, but ever since. Just a note on the Parcel A on 32 Parker Street, that's part of the theater property. And we set that aside. We built a public parking lot back there. And the public pocket park up on Parker Street, but we set aside that portion of the property for just for this project so there would be parking for the residents of the buildings. I think I've covered it all good.
Good, very good.
Mr. Eaton, please.
And we have people to present tonight?
Sure. My name is Derek Lorden. My company is Mass Ave Rentals. And as Trevor said, we've been working together now for two to three years. We're trying to make this project happen. And I have to first compliment the City of Gardner. Trevor and the mayor being two that were very, very aggressive about getting this project done because it was dead in the water. There was nothing available. And Trevor just kept trying to go between Trevor and the mayor banging on the state, looking to see if there's any way of making this happen, any type of funding that was available. And they always ran into dead ends where they said, "You're not a gateway city. You don't have a population of 30,000." So Trevor and I would have a dog and pony show with a financial group from the state, another group that was working on grants and trying to procure something. But it always seemed to run into a dead end. And we tried to appeal to them to say, "There's a reason why Gardner needs this more than others, and there's a reason why they're not a gateway city any longer. Their population has fallen below the 30,000 threshold, and they needed more than cities like Leamster, Cleveland." So after doing this over and over again, I think it was Trevor's persistency that they developed a brand, you know, after saying, "We need this, we need this, we need this." They tailor-made a program called Underutilized Property Programs, which is specifically tailor-made for blighted buildings, which obviously 4252 Parker Street is a poster child for blighted buildings, sitting there as a fire hazard, something that nobody would even entertain doing on RFP. Because of the mayor's work and Trevor's work, they were able to get them to basically get a program going on these blighted property programs, and we were able to take advantage of that. So that's how it came to be, just kind of boy, a little back history. But since that date or time that we've gotten approved, it's been a pleasure working. I've done another project, the Goodnow Pearson Building. We did some years back, working with Mayor Hock and Rob Hubbard. That's how I became affiliated with the city and got a kind of a friendship or working relationship with the city. But since we've been approved with the grant here, the City of Gardner has been great to work with and for. Even like Rob's here tonight, he was tremendous. We had a tight time constraint to try and get all the utilities off the road and into the building and do it very, very quickly because they're getting ready to pave, they have to do sidewalks. It was like a fire drill. So Rob pulled all the engineering stuff out, got that to me. Dane Arnold was tremendous. The building inspector has been tremendous. So everybody's been working together. We've got, in a very short period of time, we were able to get gas off the road to the building. We were able to get domestic water, six-inch domestic water, run in from Parker Street, and a six-inch fire suppression line running off of Connor Street, and a new sewer line running off of Connor Street, all in like a two-week period of time, which is very, very good. And we wouldn't have been able to do it if it wasn't for the cooperation of people like Rob, Dane, and so on. So I first wanted to thank everybody on that end and the city themselves for working with us so long, doing that fire drill and getting everything in. But if I could first start with, we'll start with the site layout, the site plan. And I think the planning was probably familiar with it because essentially, when the Redevelopment Authority took over the movie theater, they took over the movie theater. They took over this land here, the park that was created, this land here and this land here. And they created or they designed a public parking lot here. They pre-designed the public parking lot here and it wraps it in L shape like this. And then the park that they've already installed here. And they put really nice lighting throughout as you come down across here. So it creates a nice light. It's not overcasting light onto other properties. And it runs in unison with the street lighting in here. So all that has been done. The granite curbing has been running here. We have yet, we need to put the granite curbing on this side here. But the granite curbing here, separating the public from the private, has already been done. The street trees have been put in here or the parking lot trees have been put in there. And we've had some discussion with some different boards in the city. And what we'd like to do, and we'd like to discuss it with you this evening, and it seems like everybody's on board with it. This strip here is owned by the city. And their plan was to put stone or biocult or something like that, something that wouldn't require a lot of maintenance. But I've asked if we could take responsibility for the maintenance and the upkeep of it and run irrigation and bring it under here so we can water it and loom this island here and then coming across the strip here. The trees are already here, but it looks so nice with the nice lighting and with the landscape trees that it seems a shame not to finish it off and make it look appealing as you enter into the site and on the street. The city's done a really nice job with the lighting scheme, and they put in all-new sidewalks all and through here. So it's our desire, and it seems like the city is in favor of it and looking at your opinion tonight, is if we could run irrigation lines and powder up and through here and then take care of watering this and blooming it and seeding it in the September, October months so that the grass takes. And then just keep it up from there. I think it would look a lot better. People would be very happy. But so talk about that. And then everything has been pre-designed. Building here has 15 one-bedroom units and 14 two-bedroom units. It requires 43 parking spaces. There are 43 parking spaces here. Handicap parking here and here with the unloading zone here. There's room, ample room for snow storage here, here, and here. And we haven't decided we'll put the dumpster, but it'll probably be somewhere either in one of those three spots, probably more so back in here. The park, even though it's not owned by us, it's a nice actual open space area here. And the city did a tremendous job of making a really nice recreational park area with the stairs that come down and discharge on the parking area here. One thing that we'd like to add to the plan that is not on this plan right now is there's a current parking area right here for the building. And I would like to design it so that we could possibly get two handicap spots here to make it easier access for these, instead of the handicap being here, it would be an easier access for entering the building because everything's going to enter in the building here in the corner. There's a, there's going to be a new elevator here in the corner. And then they'd be able to park here. And there'll be a lobby, there'll be a lobby coming into the building here with mailboxes and so on. We haven't done that yet, but it's topography-wise and all of that drainage, there's a drainage structure here. It seems like it would be an ideal spot to add some extra land out for handicap parking. So I wanted to run that by the board tonight as well. So this is, this is the site plan. And a lot of it, as I mentioned, when they developed it, the Redevelopment Authority developed this. This was all done simultaneously. So kind of our site plan has already been, to the most part, pre-approved, you might say. Does anybody have any questions on the exterior of the site itself?
So your pedestrian entrance is actually on Connor Street?
Yes. So all of the parking is here and the main entrance is here. There will be one on Parker, but on Connors, the main entrance, this is where everybody will come in. This is where the elevator is. So I'll show you when we get to the floor plane section of it. We'll jump into that and you'll see that it makes it really convenient for people into the building now.
Okay. Ask him a question.
Oh, okay.
So on this, when I'm looking at here, I see one entrance. This would be Parker Street right here, is that correct?
I'm sorry? Yes, no, you're looking at Parker Street, yes.
This is Parker Street. You have one entrance right here.
That's a front entrance, but the main entrance is in the back at the parking lot. So there's an entrance here in the front, but the main entrance is in the back. I'll put it up.
Chairman, if I just real quick, just so we can understand, the parking area is what triggers site plan in this project, right? Because it's a rehab of an existing building, but because it's creating more than 15 parking spaces, it comes to the blighting of the site. That's what's triggering this process here.
So. So a little bit bigger will help a bit. So this is Parker Street here. The plan that you have has the actual cars put in it here. So there'll be a front entry here to the building. As we mentioned, the main access will be around the back. And we're going to do shaker panel. Some little kind of another rendition of it. The only thing different is we took out, we took out these whiteboards here. It looked better without it. So you have an entry here. And then we put on, on the very first elevation here, we had, this is all PVC with shaker panels along the way here. And almost it's a better picture of it in your smaller picture. I don't know if everyone has that packet because they actually have cars and little street people. And the rendering is a little bit more after it. I just don't have the bigger one of that. So that shows a better illustration of the shaker panels, the windows being two over two. The back of the building is some of the older windows that were in the building, originally from back, from years or whatever it was. The pattern of window frames or the grids were two over two. So we thought we'd go back to that look. So we're doing two over two, double window windows here, the shaker panels in the front. And then there's old signage and eye beams and things like that that need to be hidden. So we're making a hip-style roof that goes across the front of the building with some soft downlighting here to accent the sidewalk and to accent the building. And then as you go around the side, we're doing the same whiteboard here. This side of the whiteboard is going to actually be here. So it's more representation of what you see here. Comes across, squares off, and then we have the windows without this pattern here. The siding that we're using is an Everlast siding. It's a composite siding. So it's much like if you had a composite deck. It's made of the same type of material. So it's very, very adorable. It's colored all the way through. It's incredibly expensive, but it's a very nice product. I just, I used it for the first time. I redid my lake house in Ashburnham, and the product is tremendous. But it costs dearly, but it will look very, very nice. Nine inches to the weather. And when they joint and butt it together, it comes with a little fastening metal strap so that when the panel moves, it moves along the whole wall. It doesn't just move in a certain area. So it keeps the joint tight. It's a really nice-looking product. So that's, we're going to use the Everlast siding here. The rest of it's going to stay brick, like you see here.
You're going to clean up the bricks?
Yes, yeah, I got a company coming in. They're going to give me a price this week on, there has to be quite a bit of area repointing. And they're going to repoint and re-clean, but there's quite a bit of area, especially on this backside, that really needs to be repointing badly. So this is the elevator shaft here. I'm sorry, this section here is the second means of egress, the stairway that comes down here. And then over here is the elevator shaft here. And this is that area that's supposed to be all parking over here and parking over here. And then in this corner is where we enter into the building.
There is a one elevator?
One elevator, yes, thank God.
It's so expensive.
And there's a service elevator that's here now that we're going to remove. We've already started the process a little bit.
So this bottom section here in the front, is that jogging out?
No, it's staying just like it is. No, the only thing that will jog out is this roof line. That'll come out two to two and a half feet. But the sidewalk is nine to 10 feet wide. It's really wide.
Okay, so it's just the?
It's just the roof, yeah. And this already jogs out, just like you see it.
It doesn't?
Yeah, so that will be just like that. And the roof is coming out like this already. We'll just replace it and run the roof up and then carry it around.
In the bottom section, that's going to be rooms also?
Yes, yeah, so in the bottom section, there are apartments as well. But we've tried to make it, we've tried to capture it as almost a more storefronts. So we're going bigger windows. And then two of the living room areas, we're doing pitcher, so a five-foot pitcher. And these flankers are 28 by 28. So the overall, the overall window is 100 and something inches long. It's big. So it gives you a lot of glass area. And then what we're doing, we're supplying all the, for the first floor on the street front, we're supplying the shades.
Shades?
Yeah, because we don't want to, we've got quite bits.
That's very good.
Things like that, so we'll be supplying that throughout the Tennessee's.
That was my next question.
Yeah, yeah. It's a very good question, yes.
We all like the Patriots, bud.
Yes, right. Another one goes up. Right.
Dear, can you talk a little bit about the challenges of both buildings being?
Thank you, yeah. So it's, it's a huge challenge, actually. So this is, I'm sorry to introduce him earlier. My son Mitchell is here tonight as well. And one of the reasons, one reason that was enticing to take a project like this is because it's so difficult and it's so tough. Every turn, every corner you take, there's a new challenge. So I told him, I said, "He went to Wentworth for construction management. He runs out heavy equipment. He's very good on the site stuff. He's very good on excavators and dozes and can dig sawles and septic systems." I said, "This is a whole good creature. You're going to get an awful good education in here." And he has already. And we do, I do, I do pretty much all of our, it's more than one, but I do my own design work and I give it to the architects. And because I just can't, I couldn't afford to pay them what I would have to pay them for them to design how this would go architecturally and structurally because there's so many challenges. You know, if you notice first, you know, this is third floor, this is third floor, this is second floor, this is second floor. So you have to make the buildings jive together and make it handicap accessible. So there's a lot of challenges. The difference between this floor and this floor is 71 inches. And the difference between this floor and this floor is 44 inches. So there's no way that you can, that you can make a ramp one and 20 or one and 12 accommodate handicap accessibility. So what we did for that part of it is, right where the buildings come together, there's a lift here. So we have our elevator over here where everyone can use the elevator. If you come up, you get on this main hallway here that comes all the way to the front of the building. But you also have a hallway that comes over to capture this building. So you have building 52, building 42 from here to here. And the big elevation differences between this building and this building. So from the second floor or the third floor, from second floor being a 44-inch difference, third floor being a 71-inch difference, you would come down the hallway. If you're non-handicapped, you can walk the stairs to get to the next level and then get into these apartments. If not, you can get into a handicap accessible lift that will lift you up to that level and come over here. Unfortunately, there was already a really wide hallway here and there wasn't any structural bearing points that presented great problems for us. So I was able to incorporate a lift here and bring us up. And we, we did that on both the second and the third floor, so it worked out. And then something that's pretty cool is you got, actually, when you lay out your designs, these stairs actually run this unit. And this thing, we have a big living area here where you have your kitchen, bathroom, the nook, and your living room area. And then you have a set of stairs to get into this bedroom here. So it'll be kind of cool for those because you'll have that setup here. You'll have another setup here where you'll, there'll be a set of stairs going down into the bedroom. These are out here and they're here. But you'll come out of the living room, go down a set of stairs. And the stairs on each level, and we're only talking about 44 inches and they're almost 71. So it's not like it's a full flight of stairs. And we'll do oak stairs going down. So kind of a neat difference for a person that's renting that unit will have a lot of character. So we were able to handle those elevation changes with the lift and then stairs capturing another room over here. But it was, it was a lot of thinking about scratching your head a little bit. So I want to, I'll do is I want to like to go over the floor plane a little bit. Share what we're trying to do. So this is the Parker Street side, Connor Street over here. And obviously, on the Parker Street side, you don't have area to put windows so you can't capture 8% natural light, 4% ventilation. So there's no living space in this front area here. So this is just all cellar space. And our intentions are, in the basement area, we have three units over here and then two units over here. So we have five units total in the basement area. This is below the dance studio. There used to be a salon in here. And then years ago, they actually, from what I understand, was a mortuary pack a long time ago. So you've got three one-bedrooms here. And then you've got a two-bedroom here and a two-bedroom here, taking advantage of the areas to put windows here and put windows here. So and then this area here, we'll put some of the heating systems, heating and water systems back here. And then we'll run some chaise down the hallways and hit the units with it. So that's the layout, that's the layout for the basement level. But when you come in from the parking lot, which is here and here, and if we're able to get a couple of handicap units here, the main entrance way to come into the building, there'll be a little airlock here. And what's important for all of our buildings that we build is safety and security. So you'll be able to get into the airlock here, but there'll be a fob system. And we plan on putting the mailboxes, hopefully we can incorporate the mailboxes here. We do a fob system and we do cameras. So the fob system will have, so that you'll have a fob and you'll strike to enter access to it, to get in. But there'll also be an intercom system, identification system, so that if a guest came to your house, let's say Trevor came and he rings the doorbell, and then you'll see Trevor's face and then you can decide whether you want to open it or not. Most people probably would say. You can decide whether you want to let your guest in or not. And you see the actual seat. So then from there in the unit, you'll push and deactivate the strike, the electronic strike, and it will open the door and then we're allowed to get in. So there'll be cameras there as well. And then we do cameras, as you come in, there'll be an elevator here. We do cameras in the elevators as well. The cameras in the elevators are terrific. And a lot of the buildings will be built. We've gone and put a cameras in it because you get a tremendous amount of false alarms where children will come in and they'll go, the parents don't watch them and they'll go, touch the call. And then the fire department comes across and says, "Is everyone okay?" And they're embarrassed or they don't want to be blamed for it. So they say nothing and they walk out of the elevator. The calling company calls the fire department. They also call us. We say, we pick up the phone and then we ask, "What building?" And then we look at it and then we can say, "It was a family and a small child pushed a button. You can call the fire department and tell them no one is stuck in the elevator if it saves the call." But it's nice to have eyes on the building. We put them throughout, so we're going to have cameras on the street front, cameras in the back, cameras pointing to the dumpster because illegal dumping, people not bringing, putting stuff where they should be. And then just having the perimeter secured with cameras, having some cameras in the hallways, it's always important. Sometimes they'll, like in the front, there'll be such an urge to leave that front door propped open, to stick something in the front door. But we've got wet system and sprinklers, so we don't want to freeze up the sprinkler system. But we can identify who's propping the doors and who wants to get an eviction notice. So all of the cameras help with the security and it makes it very safe. And the fobs do the same as well. And then, as I mentioned, we're going to have a sprinkled building, which is required by code. But so it'll be fully sprinkled. And we do a very good job as fire, sound transmission rating, will we, in between the floors, we do, even though it's not required, once you do fire suppression sprinkler, you can, instead of having a two-hour rating, you can cut it to an hour rating because you use sprinkler. But we don't do that. So what I mean is, on the ceilings, you can do one layer of 5/8 because you have sprinkler. We still do two layers of 5/8 because it suppresses sound better. It kills the sound. And then on the party walls, we do double two-by-four wall. So wherever we have a party wall going from one unit to another, you'll see wherever it's thicker, like the, you know, wherever you see the double thickened walls, you're separating from one party to another. When we do that, we do double two-by-four wall construction. So we have two two-by-fours and we have a one-inch airspace in the middle to dent the sound. We stagger the studs because you don't want to nail electrical boxes and you have that board like a PA system where the sound transfers through the box, through the next box. So if you stagger your studs, you don't have that issue or problem. So double two-by-four wall, staggered stud, one-inch airspace. Then we use a rock wool insulation in the wall. Rock wool insulation is a fire retardant insulation. So it gives us a better fire rating of that wall. And it's a denser mat. It's more expensive, but it dents sound much better. So now we have two layers, two walls that have rock wool. And then we have the one-inch airspace. And then on top of that, on the party side, we do two layers of sheet wool, blue wool, fireproofing blue wool on each side. So we're denting as much sound as we possibly can. And we're, and we're over-reading our fire suppression, basically. That's not necessary, but in my opinion it is because you're not doing it so much for fire because we've got that handled by code. But for me, it's sound transmission. So we attack it that way and it's a big help in the construction of it. So this is your basement layout here.
So all the mechanical is going to be on Connor Street? Parker, Connor Street?
I'm glad you said that because different mechanicals are in different areas now. As we get to the floor areas, I'll point them out. But we ran the gas, the natural gases run here and runs out back here to 29 meter banks. meter banks. And probably a good point to talk about it is that normally when we do big buildings like this, uh, we go with, we'd like to go with the most efficient means we can go with. And that's, right now, would be natural gas. Ninety-five to ninety-six percent efficiency. So we do a warm air system with a modulating motor that gets us up to that. And it's a condensing system, so it'll get us up to ninety-five, it was from ninety-five to ninety-five and a half percent efficiency, um, on the natural gas side. And then we use a direct-fired, instantaneous water heater on natural gas side too. They're very expensive, but they're the only unit that'll get you into that ninety-five, ninety-six percent efficiency. That's what we've always done in the past. We're researching for this project and our next project we're doing, um, on mini splits or, uh, heat pumps, electric heat pumps, to see what, see what we can get for efficiency out of them, to see what we can get for cost. I'm not, I'm not educated enough to speak to it, but I will be by the time we get to this point. And that's our decision, is gonna be whether we're gonna go the high-end gas, um, high efficiency, or we go with the heat pumps on the electric end. So we're still determining which way to go with that. But I'm a little bit nervous about the electrical, so even if we did the electrical, if we do the heat pump, I'm still, my intentions are to run gas piping into each area. So if there was a problem or a high cost with something for a tenant, we don't want that because obviously you're gonna have a problem renting the properties here. You'll get tagged with a stigma of nice properties, really luxurious, great amenities, but it's so expensive to heat or explosion. So we don't want that. We're gonna have heating and cooling in the units. So that'll be a standard amendment, but we'll figure which is the best way to approach it. And that's the, that's the rule we'll take. But we're ready for whatever, whatever comes by running the gas line, the meters or the racks already in, uh, for those, for those gas meters. But this downstairs level, the units themselves aren't, aren't in the actual units, or they don't have closets in the units. We're utilizing all this space, also this space here for one, two, three, four, five, five units down here. So we'll have the heating system and we'll have the domestic water system all separate. And then we'll be able to vent them out in this area over here for the direct venting. And then as we go up on the floors, you'll see, uh, we've created closet space for, for the units. So this is the first floor layout. And we've got Parker Street here, Conner Street here, the parking lot wrapping like this, and the old dance studio is back in here. And we saw that we had three units underneath the dance studio here. We're gonna have another three units here above, up here. So, and then, then we get into that main, this is, you know, forty-two and fifty-two Parker as we go. So this is the building that has the extreme, um, difference in elevation. First floor is gonna be okay because we all come in at that sidewalk level. Problems arise on the second and third floor. So, um, and then as we, as you look at some of these here, you'll see, um, they have like here and here, uh, utility rooms, furnace room. So this will handle the furnace and the hot water here, here in this area here. So every area has some type of a closet or something that'll handle it. This being the first floor, I think we're catching some of these from the basement. And then as we get up on the second floor, there's a, like there's a furnace room here. There's a furnace room, furnace room here, furnace room here. And then some of the others are actually in the basement area that we have. So it's as we get to the second and the third floor, that they're all on those levels. But some would do like to have two here, two here. Over here, there's actually, uh, one, two, three. There's three in here and two in here. So there's two units here, three units here. So that's five, six, seven. So, yeah, we do have most of the closets up in here for that, for the second floor. Oh, actually, that's the street level floor. And this is the second floor, if you're looking at it from the street. So now we don't have the studio anymore because that was only one level. And then I had a basement walk-up level. And this is where we incorporated a tower for a second means of egress. So that your elevator is here, but you also have a second means of egress to get out of the building here. And then you have a set of the original front stairs that go to the front sidewalk here. But most of your activity because of your parking is gonna be back in here. So these all have their own furnace rooms. So like there's a furnace from here and there's a furnace from here, um, furnace room here, furnace room here. Come down, we have furnace rooms here. And then all the units stack over each other, so it's the same layout. So we'll have a two-bedroom here and there's another two-bedroom above it on the next level. And this is where we start coming in with that lift, you know, to check the, fix the challenges of the elevation differences. And then separate bedroom here, separate bedroom here, service and the living space on this building, and then incorporate the sleeping space over here, same over here. And then the next plan is gonna look very, is exactly the same as this one because it's the top floor. Same layout, same scheme, same everything. It's nice when they have them stacked because then you can run all your wet walls all the way down into the basement. Um, and it just works out well. They all stack and they're all identical. And then your fire protection remains the same. So like I have a firewall here that runs all the way down to the basement. Firewall runs all the way down to the basement and runs all the way up to the roof.
Gary, what are you gonna do with the larger spaces in the basement where you're not, you're not putting mechanical systems in?
Just storage.
Storage?
But not...
Laundry?
No, each, each unit has its own laundry. We don't supply the units, but they all have five-fold doors. Uh, this one has a, it's a little room, a laundry room, but, so there's three units like that. But the rest of them have five-fold doors, washer and dryer. There's a washer and dryer in every unit, a hookup. We don't supply them, but there is a hookup in each and every unit. So no coin off, no laundry. Uh, that, that space down the end is just the area that you can't really use for units because we don't have the natural light and we don't have the ventilation.
So maybe some storage down there for your tenants or...
I don't know. We're up in the air on that, whether we're gonna do that or not. If we do, we'll, we'll have to put it on the plan and do fire suppression because each unit we'll, we'll all have to, we'll, we'll fire suppression.
How about a small community room, something like that? Can you do that down there?
Um, no, because it's not habitable space, um, because it doesn't have, doesn't have the natural light and doesn't have the ventilation. And you try to keep, you know, you try to keep those areas isolated so you don't have issues or problems, you know? So it's a, it's the, but you gotta kind of stay with it. So we'll kind of deadbolt that area up pretty good. So that runs the, the top floor, and that's the floor layout is giving us fourteen two bedrooms and fifteen one-bedroom units total. And the units as far as amenities, they'll have granite countertops, they'll have central air conditioning with the, the enunciation systems that you'll be able to see at the doorways. Everything has deadbolt locks everywhere, but you've got cameras for security and fob systems. We like to do, um, rugging in the bedrooms and we'll probably either do tile or the luxury vinyl. I think we're probably gonna go luxury vinyl in the, in the entryway, living room, and the hallways here. That's kind of the new thing. It's a, it's really bulletproof, so works out really well.
Very good. I have nothing. Any questions from the board members? Any questions or comments from staff?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I made just a couple of things. Gary, you haven't depicted an area for the dumpster yet.
No, uh, but we throw the...
I would just caution not to obviously, uh, lose any parking spaces with the location.
No, we can't because it, we're calling for forty-three, we need forty-three.
And it should go on a separate concrete pad with enclosed fence, fencing enclosed it, just blocking it from the street, not your visibility from the parking area. Just so the board knows, Mass Ave, right, this is, they're in front of the committee right now for a special program for multifamily housing in commercial one. So I know Gary's presented to them, I think you might have a sidewalk too.
We did. Yeah, we had a sidewalk. And I think, I, they almost wanted to close the meeting at the time, the first meeting. And then they said, "Well, let's go do a sidewalk." And I believe they're gonna close the meeting, it's coming up, I believe, next week. So I anticipate they're gonna close the meeting. Uh, the meeting went very well. They came up with a site, they seemed to be happy with everything. So, um, I think we're in very good shape with them.
Good, good, good.
They were very responsive. They did a nice job.
One other point, maybe, Rob, I know I talked to you about this, but bringing in water in for the irrigation system, uh, how are you thinking about doing that?
It's already, it's already, uh, so on Conner Street...
But you're gonna take it off Conner though still, right?
Yes, it's in the building. So the six, there's a new six-inch line, there's a new six-inch line that runs here. That six-inch line will be dedicated for sprinkler. And then there's a six-inch line that comes off of Parker that's in, already installed.
I was actually referring to the, the irrigation for the parking.
I'm sorry.
That's right.
So, yeah, so I have the room, there's a six-foot area here, and that is, and there's gonna be a hallway right out that gets to my dead space in the basement here because we're planning on doing our electrical service back in here with the meters. And now that I have that channel, I'm gonna have, this is fire suppression, so we can't tap into that, but I've got domestic here. So we'll run a line from here, here, right down the six-foot hallway, right here underground, and then out to this area right here. So I'll just, we'll dig underneath the granite curb here and we'll put a, we'll stub up a black pipe and then we'll stub up, uh, electrical line as well. That way they can, they'll have the water running in the building and they'll have that chase pipe for the electrical.
So just be coming off your meter from inside the building?
There'll be a DAP meter, yeah.
Okay. Does that sound good, Rob?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks.
But what I was thinking, Trevor, to answer your question on that, um, looking at it right now, um, the wall is here. And there's a tremendous amount of area here that is not in play. So I would think the best spot for the dumpster would be back in here. So I'm gonna tuck that.
Do you know where the propylate is? Is the propylate at the wall, basically?
Probably is here, the wall.
Yeah, okay.
Just go back or like incorporate it back in here.
Just have to make sure it's not in the city property, that's all.
No, no. No, I'm a little hesitant to put it, this is a very good area for it.
It's a tough envelope.
But I just think it would be filled by others. So I...
It might be, it might be a challenge for the truck to get in and out of that spot too.
Yeah.
Go on to there with the car, park.
Yes, yeah. I could put it right in front of the stairs here.
Well, you know, that's why I brought it up.
Trevor, do you know from this picture, are they gonna remove the parking meters or they're gonna keep the parking meters on the sidewalk? Do you know?
I believe all the parking meters are staying in the, yeah, on Parker Street. For now, anyways, I don't, I don't know any plans for, to remove. I mean, they had to remove them when they put the new sidewalk, they ripped all the old sidewalk out, put all new sidewalk in, but I think they, I think the poles are...
Did everyone see what happened to that sidewalk? I know you know what happened to the sidewalk.
Yes.
That's terrible, wasn't it? My God, it should have broke his legs and left him with the concrete. And not, not walked across it. I've got the pictures of it.
Gary, careful yard record right now.
We are live.
I couldn't believe, I scratched that. But I couldn't believe that someone would do that.
Yeah, that's horrible. It was a, it was a, like a seven thousand dollar...
Awful. Also bad for U E O. And that, that review we all, they're really good too. They've been a pleasure to work with. They've been, from back to try and help us, you know, let's, when this, when it was a big push to get all the utilities in, they said, "Look, we'll just hold off on this portion of the sidewalk." They blocked it off. And they were really good, really good to work with.
And you're allowing them to use your property for stage users, so it kind of works well over there.
Yeah.
All right, very good. All right, at this point in the public meeting, I would ask if there's anyone here from the public who wishes to be heard in favor of this project? Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to be heard in favor of this project? Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to be heard in favor of this project? Hearing none, is there anyone here from the public who wishes to be heard in opposition to this project? Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to be heard in opposition to this project? Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to be heard in opposition to this project? Hearing none, is there any member of the public here who would like to ask a general question about this project? Hearing none, I declare the public meeting closed. Thank you, Mr. Lorin.
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to admit that.
You're welcome. Okay, well, we'll enter along the clock, so now we'll transition into our regular monthly meeting. First item of business is approval of minutes from our last meeting in May, the regular meeting and the public hearing we had about Jolly Green. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the, uh, minutes from our May meeting. Just combative right here. Any discussion? By voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. New business, forty-two to fifty-two Parker Street redevelopment project definitive plan, which we just had a very in-depth presentation about. Again, the reason this is before us is because of the, the amount of parking spaces. Otherwise, it never would have come before the planning board because it's not really under our purview, uh, you know, as far as subdivisions go. Uh, is there any discussion or questions? Anything we would need to hash out? Because we have the option to take a vote tonight if the board so desires to approve the definitive plan, disapprove the definitive plan, or table the definitive plan, really. Three options. Sir?
Chairman, I make a motion to re-accept, approve the definitive plan.
Motion made.
I'm seconding it.
Motion made and seconded to approve the definitive plan for forty-two to fifty and fifty-two Parker Street. Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, by voice vote, Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Batez?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Cormier?
Yes.
And the chairman also votes yes. Motion carries. Old business, nothing. And our next meeting Tuesday, September thirteenth. Does that sound good to everyone?
Yes.
Anything further from staff?
No, sir.
All quiet on the western front. I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? By voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.